Okay, we're going to get this meeting started, this town hall. Um, got a few announcements, um, before I start. We got the rip in what, they bringing this up to twenty-eight, twenty-nine? Okay. We're on start at the end, it's hard on Monday of next week. Um, let's see, out here in the parking lot, uh, as far as I know, it's gonna start lining that off too, where the, uh, golf carts only in the front. Um, front space, twenty-two walkways. Um, the ASHEC, we walked, we went around to all the retention ponds, making sure that they drain properly with stuff, still cleaning up, cleaned up stuff on, um, on that fist practice this morning and, um, everything. Um, let's see, um, plus we got them on here that... Okay, we got the new ballot box in, it came in yesterday, the metal one, very new one, for the ballots, you know, thing, they switched them out. Uh, Paul and Hope and, um, I mean, this morning switched them out at about twelve o'clock today, uh, out of the old box. Um, I think we had one, is that true what I heard previously about Vicky?
Yes, our unit ref, unit four, Vicky Wisner.
Okay, Vicky Wisner passed away last night?
Yes.
And her husband found her?
Very sad news.
Last night, so they're doing an autopsy, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
To the family.
So being, being, have your, have her family in prayers, in your prayers? Um, let's see, trying to think, um, we saw the ballots are out there and everything. Um, we're just gonna talk a little bit about the, about the budget vote today and figure some wise questions they like. Um, right now, when I look over last year's, I'll just tell you, share some figures with you. Okay, these figures are the cash figures for last year on a cash basis. Remember when I told you it was one, one sixty, hundred and sixty thousand dollars minus? Well, it only changed after the, got the final, uh, bits and pieces in up together. And, uh, accrual, accrual, the accrual amount was one fifty-eight, hundred and fifty-eight thousand short. The cash basis is one eighty-three, sixty-four short for last year. That's on that one. Um, as you know, we walked through the RV compound this week, we've done some things there, put some new numbers out, I ordered some more ones, because they were a little shorter than the number ones. Um, I'm gonna go over this, I'm gonna go over what code enforcement does, I know that's a big topic right now because, uh, majority of the pay increases in there, they got the most workers that have like, they're making minimum wage. I'm gonna read this, I was gonna have a beer today, but he's, he's taking his wife treatment and all that kind of stuff. Dave says, "I am asked over and over, what does security do," well, code enforcement, "do this community?" So, I would like to rerun this article that ran in a prior news, news and views, this was, this was July edition. Um, he's got here, says patrol the community, security is your eyes, near as well. Okay. House checks when the owner's on vacation, uh, log in, all night parking on RV, trailers, utility trailers, commercial vehicles, and maintain a written law of law, respond and try to assist all calls and guide residents to correct agency to assist with the problem. Wellbeing checks, um, we did one, one of those this morning, actually, uh, a landlady couldn't get hold of the renter, so she thought maybe something happened to him, so went over and checked on him this morning, and he was fine, he just didn't answer the email last night, but she had no way of knowing that because she lived in another state. Uh, let's see, all department, says, "We'll try to call, visit the home, and no response will connect, and we'll contact sheriff's department." As all departments, security, excuse me, more security, code enforcement clears roadway of all trash and dead animals, traffic control at bingo, uh, special shows, accidents, et cetera, put barricades, place barricades on streets when they're flooded, reviews community after storms or fallen bridges, roads are reading and washed out areas, night patrols report all burned out and malfunctioning streetlights. Opensan operates the gate by the school for children that walk to school, six trips a day. Check all evacuation gates and perimeter fence lines, investigate, assist with traffic accidents, and works with deputies when requested. Patrol and inspect RV compound, clubhouse, golf pro shop, shop and office. Check for registered vehicles, golf carts and mopeds, vehicle barcodes, plus all computer input of the same. Log in all visitors and contractors. Maintain manual violation law of, on all vendors being invited in by residents that do not have commercial letters on the vehicle. After three invited visits, vendor is turned over to general manager for further action. Escort emergency vehicle upon a request, also escort visitors upon request, open and lock RV compound daily. Public information, receive calls and assist residents, initiate evacuation procedures during disasters. They do not chase loose animals for their capture. Fernando County Animal Control does that. They do not per request over sheriffs, does not give volume with any incident that the sheriff's department has been called to investigate. I'm just, I'm just reading this off to you, I'm, I'm sorry if I'm not coming across clear. Um, due to all electronic equipment and radios in, in this, the security truck, the officers cannot jumpstart any vehicles, however, the officer will assist, assist the resident by offering a place to call in. Domestic violence, violation or crimes, if you suspect a crime, call the sheriff's department. Security, well, code enforcement cannot get involved in a crime because, cannot get involved in a crime investigation because the sheriffs do not want their involvement in a potential crimes, potential crime scene. Uh, we'll tell you that, um, that's, that's the majority of what they do right there. Um, I will tell you that later in forty, truck has been ordered to sign magnetic signs, it's gonna say code enforcement on it, the shield that's on the car is gonna be taken down and it's gonna be code enforcement on that, on the car and not shield like a, a security shield. And the shield that's on the door is also being taken down, uh, down there to the administrative building. And that's gonna be toward the end of next week, they've been ordered, they are coming in, uh, she told me they'd be here next week. The, I actually went to the vendor, which is a front shack, and he said they'd be here then. So this is not, you'll say that I got from Carol or Lynn or anything, uh, I went straight to the source. Um, listen. Um, anybody has any questions about anything? I really can't answer, well, I'll try to answer if somebody asks a question about code enforcement, but, uh, I keep hearing this thing about civilian violation committee or something like that, and I'm thinking, please don't, don't go that route because it's gonna be neighbor against neighbor, if, if you don't like me, I'm gonna get violations, or I don't like my neighbor, I'm gonna try to give him a violation. It's gonna go back and forth, and you gotta have somebody that's kind of an impartial party to look at this thing, see if it is a violation or it's not a violation. So, not really gonna save, save hardly no money by doing that, you might get away with getting rid of the drivers and stuff, but that's still not enough to make the three dollar assessment we're looking forward to raise. Um, the past mistakes by last year's board on that shortage, or I would say, um, the shortage that was there, whether it be a, a clerical error, clerical error or not, uh, we gotta move on from this, we gotta, we can't punish the next board or my board because the mistakes, mistakes they made. Uh, they should not have fired the GM and bookkeeper at the same time, um, and not had nobody in place to take it over, and they should not have let residents come in there and, certain residents came in around the computers and things like that and had access to information that they should not have had, because I knew that's, I know that's come up. Hang on a second, because I know I got a question. Okay, I don't have one yet, but, but I know somebody asked me about that, if they had access, and I said, unfortunately, when they did that, yeah, they had access to, to residents' information that they should not have had. I will say that, um, because I could verify with several employees that there was people working at desk and behind the computers that were not employees, that were regular residents. So, um, if anybody's got any question, I'll start going right inside, I mean, right inside the audience, be my left hand side. Somebody's got any question over here? Ask anything? What about over here on the, on the right side, over here? What seems like to support the crowd, and I wanna have no questions asked tonight today? Um, I've got a question right here, it says, says, "I'm concerned that unauthorized people had access to information. HOA on auto pay means bank accounts." I understand that, that's, like I said, I don't know what they had access to or what they could gain to, I'll just leave it at that part. Um, let's see, yesterday we had the, uh, had the meeting about the amendments, change to the bylaws. Um, if me personally, if I was, when I vote for that, I was gonna vote yes on all three, and yes for the budget. Um, can't, we just can't make, um, the mistakes they, the mistakes they made, can't, I mean, by voting this budget down, the only one you're gonna punish is the employees now, and then you're going to punish this board for the state's last board made.
Jerry.
Yeah, okay.
What are the consequences of not passing the budget?
Okay, I got a question, I got a question that was asked, um, what the consequences were if we don't, don't pass the budget? Well, the harsh reality is, I can, I can see that maybe the clubhouse will be closed one to two days a week, and we'll have stagger shifts at the guard shack, toward that means that Peter and Tim will probably have to work, work the guard shack some, like, say every other, like, maybe one day, and then Greg close, Greg worked second shift on it, and cut back hours from the employees. That's the only way I can see it, because there ain't enough, there's no way to cut, say, a hundred thousand out of code enforcement without cutting something up here, there's no way to do it. Um, that's the harsh reality of it. And if you do it like it did in years past, uh, which I haven't got that question yet, but I probably would think about getting it, would be, uh, in years past, what they did was, they didn't do anything. What they did was, they took the money that was paid in December, if I paid my assessment for the whole year, and say I come in December and I said, "I'm gonna pay for the whole year", okay, I'm gonna pay my five hundred, thirty dollars or forty dollars, and say I paid it the last week of December or right around the middle of the month, well, they'd take that money and then use it to pay October, I mean, November, December bills. Well, eventually, if you don't do something, then that's going to get, that's gonna get better, and you're not gonna be able to grab out of that money, then you end up taking it out of the reserves, and that's illegal. And then you're, eventually, if that keeps going on, then the state's gonna come in, it's gonna be in a receivership and things like this that, but I can see it, if you look at the figures for the last ten years, which I've spoken about them before. Excuse me, just meant moving stuff. Okay, okay, this, this sheet I, I talked about before, it says that on the back page here is for the last ten years, what the over and short is. And the combination of that, it shows that it's four hundred and five thousand dollars and, well, I'll take it back, says four hundred and five thousand dollars and two hundred and eleven and two cents. That figure on this piece of paper, you gotta remember, it does not have, one thing that piece of paper's missing, is it doesn't have that shortage from last year. So, it's got the eighty-eight thousand plus on it, because it does not have the bad debt plus depreciation, all that on here, so you gotta say, that four hundred and five thousand dollars is actually short another eighty-eight thousand, that would bring it to four hundred ninety-three thousand, then you gotta tack on the hundred and sixty thousand that you're short, so that's gonna put it well over a half million dollars short for the last ten years. I would, my personal opinion is, I would not vote for anybody on the board that has, has run the community in the last ten years, because the way they've handled things or the way they've not handled things is, is just plain bad. Um, I don't have it in detail, but we can go down, if I, if I went, I'm gonna do some more research on it, and say I go back ten years, and I do this individually out here, and then one time, sometime I'll do it to where I'll show those figures for that year plus what was in the budget. So you can, if you wanna see what maybe if somebody did something in two thousand twelve, maybe they're, had, they figured a carryover so much money and it wasn't there, I can show you that. Um, I'll just show you, I'll give you example here. Okay, here's the budget for last year, I mean, for, I'm sorry, for this year. And it's showing a projected carryover of twenty-four thousand. Well, we already know we're short, we're gonna be short that, because they're saying there's gonna be a carryover of twenty-four thousand for last year, when in fact it couldn't be. That's just one example. I don't know if I got them all or not, but, uh, I had the other budgets here, I looked and seen. Okay, this is just one year, got estimated carryover of fines, and it says forty-six thousand dollars. And that was in one year that, um, I'm thinking it was short that year. Another year, it said projected budget carryover fines, another forty-five thousand dollars a year. I just, I've never understood how you can, how you can make a projected carryover of fines when you're short, I don't get that part. Here's one that says sixty thousand dollars for that year, projected carryover fines. This one shows forty-one thousand, and then last year, of course, twenty-four thousand. How many of those years, you wonder, I wonder, did somebody pay all the reserves? Well, I see, I can tell you that too. I'm just seeing this, the budget combination, uh, budget problem that we got, it just, it extends more than just last year. Okay, it says that they were supposed to put in the budget, three hundred ninety-eight, four hundred thirty-eight, four forty-seven, which was last year, and they only put in three hundred and ninety-five, and I had to pay the, well, three ninety-something, because I paid forty-three dollars.
Jerry?
Yeah?
Is it all done every year?
Yeah, all, all is done every year.
Is it done before the, uh, finance committee meets or after?
Before.
It's done before most time, and this year, the master did more than do it, because of course they had a problem, and so we had, I can't even pronounce her name, lady that left, it's Bashir and Legend, Legend already did it this year.
The other reports that we previously received, do they show all the deficits?
Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure they wouldn't show bad debt on them and the depreciation on there. Uh, let's see, right here you got what was in, supposed to be in reserves, or what was paid in reserves was three ninety-five last year, three ninety-eight, three seventy-five, three eighteen, two forty, it looks like it paid most of it. Um, so that's, that's where that went. Um, like I said, this is a combination, this, it's just been, you know, when you say you're gonna carryover, carryover from, an overage from last year to this year, well, if that makes you short twenty thousand dollars, or whatever, you're gonna be short that twenty thousand at the end of year, plus whatever you protect, the carryovers next year, so that's gonna make you even shorter. So that's how you can get to this point. Um, so that's why I'm saying there's, basically, there's, you know, there's at least a half million dollars out there somewhere, it's either in, the way I see it, there either it's been foreclosures that have been bad, they maybe have not collected on them, or it's just where they charge out a lot of fines and like, they were not collecting on them, or people didn't pay them, so. But most, I'll say, half that is probably bad, probably bad debt. I've asked what ours is gonna be this year, and right now, we know that we got, we billed sixty thousand dollars worth of stuff, help, whether it be like fines, whatever it might be. And I know we only collected thirty thousand of it, so, right now, we've got thirty thousand outstanding, plus we got foreclosures, which are about twenty thousand dollars worth of foreclosure. So how much of that we're gonna collect, I don't know. But I will say, right now, I've got it right here in front of me. So far, and this does not have bad debt on it, so I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say this is tru- truly accurate, I had this ran off yesterday afternoon. And it says we're up nine, one hundred ninety-six thousand dollars, which we've got a net income right now of one ninety-six, but it doesn't show bad debt on it, it doesn't mean I, I don't, I mean, it looks good if I said it looks good, because, hey, we made money. But, uh, I ain't got, I don't know what the bad debt's gonna be, so, so far, I don't know, kinda thinks around, you know, the, probably the fifty-five thousand dollars, but it says at the bottom of the page, it says net, net profit. Net income, one ninety-six, seven seventy, seven hundred, I mean, seventy, sixty-seven dollars, and that is the accrual basis. And the, uh, cash basis, it says, one hundred eleven thousand, five dollars and ninety-eight cents. So see, you can tell the difference, accrual basis and cash basis. So, um, as I've said before, I think, my opinion is, we're probably gonna be close because we know that insurance won't have to be paid in December, and we know that property tax is gonna be paid in November, and kinda got an idea of what the, what the bills are per month, so, uh, we're gonna be close, even, even with the not having bingo all year and stuff like that, I think we've, um, I think we've done pretty good so far.
Hey Jerry?
Yes?
What kind of safeguards do we have to put our, put in place in order so that we receive the actual numbers like what you're giving us, other than be very selective in who sits that president's chair? What safeguards do we put on the accounting side so that ten years from now, we're not sitting in this same pickle looking at another half a million dollars in the hole?
Okay, I think I, I think I can answer that question. Uh, if I was looking at this, I was, and I was outside here and not, and just an outside person, my personal opinion is that there should have been some way to say, hey, look, um, safeguard would be like, for example, ten years ago, they should have had a column that said, that said foreclosures should be like, liens is not collected, and all that, that column, and then if any of that's collected the next year, that number goes down. And then if it's not collected next year, that number goes up. So you know this debt is carryover like ten years, for example, and that'd be the best way to solve that problem, and then somebody could point to it and say, hey, like, say if Mark come in here, he was, cause he's president last year, they could say, well, that hundred and eight, hundred and sixty thousand-
What kind of safeguards do we have to put our, put in place in order so that we receive the actual numbers like what you're giving us? Other than be very selective in who sits that president's chair? What safeguards do we put on the accounting side so that ten years from now, we're not sitting in this same pickle looking at another half a million dollars in the hole?
Okay, I think I, I think I can answer that question. Uh, if I was looking at this, I was, and I was outside here and not, and just an outside person. My personal opinion is that there should have been some way to say, hey, look, um, safeguard would be like, for example, ten years ago, they should have had a column that said, that said foreclosures should be like liens that's not collected and all that, that column. And then if any of that's collected the next year, that number goes down. And then if it's not collected next year, that number goes up. So you know this debt has carried over like ten years, for example. And that'd be the best way to solve that problem. And then somebody could point to it and say, hey, like say if Mark come in here, he just called his president last year, they could say, well, that hundred and eighty, hundred and sixty thousand dollars is, part of that is from ten years ago, carryover bad debt. So yeah, that's one thing that's missing on there. If it rolls over from year to year, there should be a column or a number that fluctuates with that. Cause most, when I look at that thing, I see that number like, like I just said, a half million dollars. Uh, and you don't know if it comes from last year, year four last, five years ago, ten years ago, if it was a, say, for example, something bad happened like selling of a house, um, maybe it didn't get credited to the mark, right line. It's, um, something like that, but, um...
James Bennett answered your question.
Okay, let's see what he's got. Okay, his question is, any potential legal cost or damages that may have not have been included in the budget projection that could further impale the shortfall? Okay, I don't know of any legal stuff, other than the lawsuits out there, but I do know, I will share this information, that the insurance went up and not the one that's like big one, that's like sixty thousand dollars part of the, um, that's part of the budget. The other one that was like eight thousand dollars, it went up twenty-four percent. And it was because of that lawsuit with, uh, concerning the offices, the offices and the, uh, the Millers over here on, uh, Brookridge Boulevard. Uh, I will tell one thing, and I know that every time that a certain group, they, uh, try to go after something or complain about something here, is that every time they try to, try to go after, wouldn't you say they go after somebody's license or they go after me or something like that, well, you have to bring the attorney in. So when you gotta bring attorney in, well, that costs fees. So actually, when they complain about stuff like maybe nitpick a line or I'm like a SOP or something like that, then you gotta get a legal response from Master. Then Master charges the HOA for that. So there's things that's been done that has been signed off by present board members against other board members and past board members against me. They have caused Brookridge money because it's like realist, there's no backbone to it. It's like, like you're trying to get like, you know, the SOPs is basically a guideline. And you have to have a legal response to that. So it's gotta be like send it back into state and all this kinda stuff. I think the last one was unheard of, it was sixty-four pages. So, how much time did it cost in legal fees and how much time did it cost, cost Carol to answer it? Like answer each, every little detailed question? And it's probably not gonna work because it's gonna be, it's on SOPs and stuff, so, um, and to me, I don't know how much time we, time was spent for Master's gonna charge for that and stuff. Yes?
I'd like to know why we don't have an accountant every quarter, why just one or two years? Because this wouldn't be happening if we had an accountant every quarter.
Well, that's something, that, that's something that needs to be voted on. I would go for that and I think it should be on there, count it every quarter. Uh, let's see, I'm gonna try to tell you something real quick and we'll talk about legal fees and stuff.
Jerry asked you a question too?
Get my screen come black, let's see.
So does Sue Levenson.
Okay, how can the board run efficiently with those responsible still on the board? There is already so much visual conflict. Okay, I think I answered that question. How can it run badly? Well, from my standpoint, I'll be honest with you, I try to keep them at a distance. So that means I don't let them involved in something. Because if you let them involved in some things, like I've said before, yeah, you don't, I don't try to close them out so purposely, well, I do purposely, uh, keep them out of loop as they call it. Um, is because I know that if certain board members would have had input in buying this truck, so to speak, we would have a, probably a hybrid, probably something ten do, ten thousand dollars cheaper, cheaper parts, break down a lot, would not have, would have no other use other than when it gives up, it gives up. It's not gonna have a life, probably not gonna have a lifetime warranty on it and probably you keep passing on to, to Public Works and then not have to buy a forty to fifty thousand dollar vehicle. And then instead of replacing a code enforcement vehicle and Public Works, you're gonna replace one of them because you give the other one, you give Public Works a small truck. So that's the thing. If I were to listen to that, we would be right here, we might have, well, that's a good answer, I agree that's probably. And, uh, it might be four, might be four thousand dollars less, but no, it's, it's not gonna be, can't be used for anything else. So, um, that's where, that's where it stands at. Uh, I see the conflict there, I know it's there. Uh, I see that they fight us, they fight, fight me on everything. Uh, and just like I've said before with them, is that remember weeks ago when we put the mask mandate in place? Okay, and one day, one of them was out here chasing a resident around, saying earlier in the week, he was going to, and put us in receivership because he was going to sue Brookridge because we would not give him the payroll. Next day, he says he called, uh, the state about the mask mandate. And that Wednesday night meeting, I didn't, he claimed I didn't do, make the decision for the mask mandate early enough. And then the next day, he gets back saying, I want the mask mandate off. I, that, where your, where your mind, your talking goes with, close with the wind, um, you just can't listen to that stuff. I know they was elected and then I know that other people will say things that, like, um, like James Mintz on here, I know he, he's asked questions for why certain things, why they would do certain things, I have no idea. So the next question I have is, how, we do, we do the code enforcement, but not to the extent used now. Most homeowners have security cameras, can report to go and not contact the owners themselves. I don't know, I don't know what that question is exactly.
The footage off those cameras?
Oh, footage off the cameras, okay. Well, if it's something illegal, they would be calling the police anyway, but, um, I wonder about, I really just have more time like, like if, if say Tim over there in the corner, he hates me or something, he's gonna want me to get leaves out of my gut or whether there's leaves in them or not. I mean, that's just the way it's gonna be. Who's gonna, who's gonna say different? Who's gonna say it's a violation? Who's not gonna say it? Plus, is that same person, he's gonna come out and say, well, he's took care of. And then you've got people, people, how you gonna find, are you gonna find him? How you gonna do that? I just, I don't understand that part. Now, a central, I think somebody said something about a central clearinghouse to, to deal out the fines and stuff. But I'm thinking, well, you're only really getting rid of basically three drivers. So I don't know like second, third shift and then first, second and third on the weekend. And that's still only gonna amount to about half of three dollars. And that's still not enough to, still not enough. But let's see, another question is, um, let's see, those responsible should, should be recalled or resigned. Well, they've been asked to resign a couple of times. Uh, the next question is, I think we should know who and what board members have been sued and money paid out. That's another unnecessary expense. Well, I agree with you. Um, let's see, if they are current board members still on, still, should not be on the board. Well, sometimes, well, I will say that, I mean, I've not been sued, but I know they have sent complaints in, complaints in, they kinda pulled me into those things. One of them would be, uh, July, when I said that, uh, homeowner called Mike Long, the Brooklyn consultant, and pretend, wait, I don't know if she pretended to be a resident or a board member or what, but made him so uncomfortable that he called you Vince. And I talked to him and verified, he said, yeah, she wanted information, what kinda job he did and all this stuff. Well, I wouldn't want, I just think that's wrong. I thought that's wrong from the very beginning because he was hired by an ad hoc committee, was recommended, and, uh, I gave him the information that was in the office, exactly what he, what, what he did, his contract, a copy of his contract, and what it said in QuickBooks. And that did not suffice, it did not suffice her. She still called him anyway. So, me, that's just wrong. Um, and that's part of, I got sued, I didn't really get sued, I made the complaint, but I got thrown into that. So, uh, that reason. And, and they still carrying on about that. And, uh, I got cut, this time around, it has to do with saying that I told, uh, that I said that, that he was not paid to collect free bids, which in fact, I said he was paid to collect free bids.
Yep, he was.
I was, I said that he was paid to, he's actually paid to do more than that, collect free bids. And, uh, so that's so far off and that's part of that, that's part of that thing too. Let's see. I don't know of any, the only, the only lawsuits I know about right now is Charles Office's lawsuit that, Lee lives on Brookridge Board. Another one's out there at Florida Realty. I know the one that the chairman had the, what'd you call it? What's it got? What's that thing?
She's asking about current, current and prior.
Oh, there's not against, there's not against board members I know about because, I think it's because of volunteer thing, so I'm not sure of any of this against it. There, hmm, but the only other one is a guy that got hit on the motorcycles.
Oh, the sling.
The sling. And then the lady that fell in her house, she's still in Brookridge even though it was not, we don't have anything to do with that. So that's, that, that's, that's realist there too, so, um, let's see, I, I will...
Jerry, can I ask one question?
Yeah.
What's the number of complaints that have been filed against this new GM by the outstanding group? And what's the approximate dollar amount that has been lost due to legal fees for us protecting her?
Okay, there's probably been, I'm gonna say there's been about ten, twelve complaints. Uh, there's only two that's been filed with the state, that's a combination of, of, I think there's five on the first one, about five on this. Let's see, I'll tell you what I think, let's see, attorney fees so far. Okay, so far for the year, let me make sure I look at that right. No, I can't agree on that right, truly goodness. Maybe I'm reading it right, it says fifty-three thousand dollars.
So we have sitting board members filing grievances with the state against our GM costing us legal fees? Is that correct?
I ask her, right, they do that?
Yeah, why aren't they here? Why are they still sitting on board? The second they signed that and it became a legal document to go for review, does that not make them a member in bad standing?
Well, it should, I've tried to talk, talk to Master about that myself, you know, what can you do about that? Yeah, it's like, they're supposed to be taking your assets and then they're signing off that thing. When they went after, when they went after her license back then, a few months back, and that thing's already been cleared and everything. But when they went after Carol's license in April, they drug me into it because I had a stroke and heart attack. Okay, and they were saying things like, uh, she's, she handled the election wrong and all that. Well, that's gonna cost you money because, you know, he's working for, for her because she's an employee here. So naturally, he's gonna charge Brookridge. So they do this to, like you said, they waste money by doing this stuff. And, uh, they shouldn't be held accountable. And Mark signed off on that thing as a witness. So to fight the election, and that was...
Can we, the membership call for removal of Mark or sit complaint?
Well, I had called for a recall back, you remember, when I was having town meetings back in January and February at Tom Bombard Park up there. I talked about the recalls and stuff. And he said the only way, I mean, he said to me, the only way would be to do a recall or if it's so far gone, you just wait and vote him out for the next election. That I gotta suffer through this thing. So, uh, but that's, that stunts me when I see that. Fifty-three thousand dollars already this year in legal fees. What was that?
Didn't they hire Carol?
And they hired, they hired her too with that, that's, that's what, that's what gets me is they, they hired her, now they're trying, now they're trying their way they can to fire her, take her license away from her. That blows my mind, I didn't even think about that part. But, uh... But part of that, part of that, I will say attorney fees is probably, I'll say, most of that is probably, uh, it's probably other things like, uh, you know, we have to like win the, uh, like the foreclosures and the liens. And also, we don't have no choice but when we got Chris Patterson, which is the insurance attorney, he wants to know updates on the office's house. And then he wants to know what's going on with that lawsuit. So he has to have a conference call with, uh, Master and us. So I don't know how much, we'll probably be, we're, of course, we'll be in charge of both, by both of them. But that's one, that's one example. I'm stunned to see that, that's the biggest number on our file. Fifty-three thousand, yes. Well, the only number hiring now is the VCR, VRC fines, which says they billed out sixty thousand. And that's on a accrual basis. Let's see, on the cash basis, the attorney fees are forty-nine thousand. And, and then the, um, VRC fines is twenty-six thousand. So let's see, that is a difference right there of, uh, four thousand dollars worth of bad debt. That'd be bad debt for them to collect those fines or anything. I will go into what, some of the stuff we've had this year. Um, let's see, some of this stuff is like you said, like people said, dirt and mold, clutter on the cardboard, things like that. And then there's other things on there like, uh, somebody's unregistered tenant. You know, I don't know if I, a, uh, like a civilian enforcement people know anything about that. Uh, let's see, boat parked in backyard, another unregistered male, resident, resident, another arrest, unregistered male. These are back in January.
Jerry's got a couple more questions for you.
Okay. Okay, it says, so they are costing... Okay, it says, so they are costing Brookridge money and adding toward it. Yep, that's correct. Um, I agree that's even lea, is that even legal for them to still be on the board is another question. Uh, let's see, is that, somebody's asking if they, if they have a contract? And I'll say, yep, they do have a contract. Somebody asked a question, did Mark or Carol, I said, yep. Let's see. Uh, let's see, contract was, somebody's asking how many, what was the term of it? Well, they said it's a five year, so I'll just say I agree with you. Okay, let's see what else I'm missing.
She asked another question below that one.
No, I'm trying to get to it. Uh, says, I have no complaints, but Carol, but a five-year contract, did the board approve that? I'll say, no, they didn't. That was done in November last year, or October. That's kind of common knowledge out here, but.
I got good news.
What's that, what's good news?
Okay, while we've been sitting here at the meeting, I had a few texts, uh, and actually email from Florida courts. Um, one of their contracted companies, uh, or actual jobs that they were going to do before are tennis courts. Um, where they're gonna push that back to after the first of, of the year. So we can become next in line, so they'll be here Tuesday.
Oh, good.
Possibly, possibly Tuesday, Wednesday, they'll start doing that, and, um, so I got some work to do tomorrow to get up to the office and let them know that they'll be starting next week, so I can get some payments going to them, so.
Now, we also have to get those pine wishers down that you said you were gonna remove, with, that have that pine quality in it?
Probably those.
The trees out there?
Yeah, they're coming down.
Well, they're coming down.
Yeah.
It really doesn't really hinder on what they're doing out there as far as the resupposition of the court.
Okay, so that's, that's.
That's good news.
That's a good news. And let's see, I'm looking at all these violations, like big parking, like, uh, utility trailer, uh, on the property, um, uh, some vehicle parked on the grass thing, and there's vehicles not registered, unregistered male in, in the residence, unregistered female in the residence, unregistered female in the residence, unauthorized female residing. So there is a, there is a few of these, and most of the other ones are vehicles parked on the grass and unregistered male, unregistered female, unregistered female. That's dressed. Trash out the street. More trash in driveway, um. Let's see if I'm by speeding. I've seen that, I've seen where somebody posted about speeding on, on next door, and I'm like, sit someone, take, caught somebody speeding and give them a violation right there? Do you think, do you think somebody's gonna stop for them out on the road? Don't keep driving on them. I'm not gonna stop for somebody saying I was speeding like six miles an hour. So that was one of the things come up. Right now, I don't see, let's see. Okay, it's back in January, January. I do have the, I will say one thing we, we've done. I'll pass it over to the advisory committee, which is the, the main one, which is headed up by Steve, Steve Pastner. He has got like, uh, he's got himself and two other snowbirds on it, and then they got two full-time residents here on it. They are looking at, they've got the county coming in here and giving us free inspection, like what to do with the roads, if there's, if there needs crosswalks, if the signs are not big enough. They're gonna do like a free study, if it's like, um, uh, if you cut Brookridge Board down to one lane, like left lane traffic and what right lane being dog carts and walking, so you can try to cut down on speeders. They're gonna do that free, which is a good thing. Uh, don't cost nothing for them to say, to give their opinion about that. Next, sometime here in the next few weeks.
Jerry, Jerry's got another, another statement she wants to read.
Okay. Okay, the last thing she got here is, I just don't, do not feel it's in the best interest of Brookridge to have any previous board members involved in any of this be on the board or have access to any information. I read that and I said, yep, I mean, I read now. I kind of agree with that because it's like, you'll go back to the same way it was. You, nobody wants to go back to the way it was last year or five years ago. I mean, that'd be like, you know, right now, we try and do everything like televised these town halls, we have them more often. Anything to do, uh, if I could type real good, we'd do Zoom meetings again, but, um, so far I can't. So, uh, I sent it, I tried to post that we're just gonna have a town hall meeting, and it took me like six tries to get it right. But, um, we try every time, can't give y'all as much information as possible. Like I, I do it because to me, you're just a resident like I am, I own and know, know details, I wanna know how much it's costing, and how it affects, and, um, so far, you see, I'm, I've been surprised. Like I get things thrown to me like, um, you know, where people bought a house near and they, they're having their son living here, but maybe their son's not fifty-five years old, and they won't, uh, they let him stay here, and I try to say, well, he's not fifty-five and all that, and, you know, you gotta give him some, some kind of compassion. Well, if a guy's been injured, something like that, and I said, well, you need to stay all the night over here because you own this house, they live in Spring Hill. So, uh, at least try that on, on a case-by-case basis. And then if you know somebody's doing it like they're trying to take advantage of you, uh, then, uh, can't really say, um, you know, what, what is the saying goes, what we want? What is it? Yeah, that's it right there, she said, right there. And that's what, that's what happens sometimes, because most time I give people my word. I think I've always thought words bond, so if you say you're gonna do something, then I, I really expect you to follow through with it. I mean, because I don't expect me to follow through with it, so. That was reason for town hall meetings, and that's the reason for, uh, sharing this information, uh, out here, and. If anybody's got any question about anything else, like Secretary Craftsman on here asking a question about it, but anybody else out here, uh. Okay. Okay, it's the county.
The county?
Yeah, it's doing it free of course. Yeah. Yeah, where they find the right signs and all. Oh, I'll talk about, now I realize I ain't got a mask on here. Okay, I'm six feet away. Okay.
Jerry, regarding to the compound, how often does security inform you of what the cameras are doing in there? Are they all working daily and at night? If somebody's out there watching it, I can't get in there.
Right, they're checking them at the, uh.
You know, you've got the cameras, one hole, six cameras on it. What good is that doing? How much is it covering? It isn't covering the road, we're always having problems.
That's a good question right there. I know Billy's looked at them and it becomes like, I know they're showing it two places. One is they're showing it to guard check. On one screen's up there. And then they're, they're recording on it, I guess the DVR is in the maintenance field at, at the RV compound. As I, as, as we know, when they've gone out, usually they've gone out because the storms hit it, not because of any other reason. Um, he checks them. Also, we gotta remember this. Somebody's mentioned one time about, does somebody look at the cameras all the time, monitor the cameras? They see something that happens, well, that's gonna cost money for somebody just to, just to monitor the cameras. Whether it be in the RV compound, whether it be monitoring cameras like that shine at the.
Lane TV? Forty-three inch TV that's on every time after nine PM in the guard shack.
That should be, I think that's the one in the middle. Okay, that's the one in the middle with all the cameras.
Uh, it was watching Vegas sign the other night, I hate your instructions.
I'll check, I'll check into that, see if they, see if they done that. Okay, I will say something about, about the, the way things are here. Okay, out there at the guard check. Okay, you have, you have two work first shift, two work second shift, you have one person that works third shift and a driver. So, we try to say, can we cut back people? Well, you got the bare minimum out there, but they work five on five off. Where the difference is in this, I'm talking about payroll. Okay, the payroll yesterday was the first time it came out since ten dollars, I heard, since it went up to ten dollars. Payroll changed almost three thousand dollars. That was a difference between, because normally it's been about, about twenty-eight, six or lower. And it was right at, close to thirty-one yesterday, so it was right around thirty thousand dollars. You take three thousand times nineteen pay periods, and that is fifty-seven thousand dollars. Okay, reason I said nineteen, because we're gonna have seven pay periods that are gonna catch up, the rest of them that are close to between ten dollars and eleven dollars. Next September. Okay, so we kind of calculate that out, that the pay's gonna go up, and, like I said, the difference was three thousand dollars. It's probably gonna be another fifteen hundred, because that's half of it. That's gonna make it forty-five hundred. So forty-five hundred times, times seven. Am I, no, am I right?
Yep, yep.
Yeah, so that's right at twenty-eight, twenty-nine thousand dollar difference.
Another thirty-five thousand?
Another thirty thousand, so, so you see, that's where the hundred thousand's coming from. Between, eighty to a hundred thousand where it's coming from, most of it's coming from just the minimum wage, there's nothing else. Somebody had on, somebody asked a question the other day, they saw something that was a, a hundred thousand dollar difference, I mean, a hun, like three hundred percent increase. I think it was accounting fees or something. Well, the accountant, reason it's larger for the accountant is because the price increases. Masters said they would do this, do the audit for, for four thousand dollars originally. Well, when they broke the contract, because they did, got the extension and wouldn't do it first this year, you had to find somebody else. And their cheapest price was ten thousand dollars to do it. So you're gonna have to figure in next year, it's gonna have to be ten thousand dollars. But also, next year, you think I cut, I cut items, I cut about six items. I think one thing was, even with salaries going up, I even cut, I even cut some items. One of them was building maintenance for down there, like to paint the building or whatever it is. I think that, that number got cut. I think Vince up here, his, his ma, his maintenance got cut. I know that the cars got, the car got cut because we traded, he didn't got the truck, so that got cut. Done cut down, so, actually, it was not all wages increased, because whatever the wages went up, we did cut about, I'll say about twenty-five thousand off of it. And then you gotta realize, we may, we did not put the bank Friday night bingo in the budget. In the past, it's been in the budget. Well, they don't belong to, I mean, granted, they, they pay us whatever it's twenty-seven thousand, twenty-seven hundred a month to rent the hall. Well, no guarantee that was gonna come back because of COVID or anything else, so we did not put them in there. I said, we can't put that in there because they're not guaranteed money. So if we do get that, and if we do get what we're trying to get off the news reviews, uh, then that's what I call gravy. But I really do, I, I ask for that. I'd hate to see employees losing a job. I'd hate to see the clubhouse closed like, say, Sunday and Monday or something like that. And that's, to me, that's what would happen. What we need to have, and they not necessarily, somebody else come in, they can try to run it the same, run it as is, and just ignore the minimum wage going up, and just try to borrow money from other reserves or whatever, pay payroll and stuff, and start doing illegal stuff all over again, and not be transparent, trying to hide it, things like that. And if people want that, I'd just shake my head. Because of me, I think it needs to start over. I need things, you need to start basically from scratch and relook at everything. And, uh, uh, get that part, get, you know, on the control. But, um, has you got any more questions online?
Yes, uh, uh, Sue's got, Sue's got something. True Love and Seller?
Okay, snowbirds should be allowed to run for the board because there's a lot of qualified people out there. Due to the pandemic, it's proven the fact that businesses and organizations usually in it. Yeah, we have to revamp bylaws to, for that. Also, there's really a, the only problem I see with that is, yeah, they would have more say-so, that's right. But the problem is. They're not here. And some things you have to fear, because I found out the hard way this year that you can't do a lot of this stuff. If you have three people that are snowbirds on the board, and you have like four that's here, and then say three or four of those, four don't wanna do anything, guess what, one person's doing it all. And I can attest to that, that it's harder to remember everything. Uh, because I do about, I, I wanna say I do about, about seventy-five percent of everything. So, um, you know, why, it's because I choose to, because it's like, uh, um, I've seen, I've seen where you give certain things to other people, and they don't ever follow through, or they, all they're interested in is whether they wanna be liked, and they don't wanna tell the truth. One of them, I gave, just a great example, I gave the HCC committee, one of them was, the first thing you wanna do is change the hours. And when you wanna change hours to later on in the day, that would cause two people to have, mess up what they do, and one person, um, be delayed on doing anything. At least half the day would be lost because it was gonna be turned back, and all that stuff was ready to go first thing in the morning. And plus, there was a communication problem with everything, had five different stories. Ain't that right? Ken, Ken knows about it, he was sitting on that ACC committee. And I basically had to go in there and straighten that thing out, because, uh, he would never tell that, uh, the house sits, house sits too close to the road on Brookridge Board. That thing's sitting ten feet closer than most houses. And the reason it's sitting that way is because the county said it has to be moved up because of that retention bond, because it would sink in their retention bond. So they made them move it up, and see, they didn't bother explaining that to the ACC committee at the time, Rich didn't, so I had to explain it. So, uh, uh, we don't have any more questions. Let's see what else we got on here. Cut back the hours of code enforcement and you won't have to close the pool office. I tried to explain that earlier, earlier. That question would be, uh, there's just not enough, there's, there's just not enough people to make that hundred thousand dollar difference up. You cut back, uh, cut back the drivers, you can't cut back the guard staff, you can't, you really need to have a third shift person just in case. What if the guy that works the, works the guard shack, uh, if you're not got two here and say he falls or he has a heart attack or something like that, then who's gonna know? Is somebody gonna come through, a visitor gonna get out of his car and come in there and look? Maybe find him thirty minutes later? No, you gotta have two people because anything could happen. He could fall in the bathroom in there or, or, uh, whoever working third shift. You know, they could strike the lighting, strike the building, you know? Things like that. So, uh, I think that's all of it. Well, some, someplace we need to install a lighting rod, rod. Okay, I think that's all the questions they got. He's got one right here.
So when code enforcement gives you a ticket or whatever it is, is there money involved in that?
Yeah, most time there is, but people don't realize when, when there's a violation, like, I'm reading this right here. All right, some of this stuff, like, say, code enforcement comes out to your house and they see like, uh, I'll just pick this one right here. It says, "Bo parked in backyard." Okay, you got fourteen days to move it before the violation goes into effect. So if you, if you move it somewhere, then you don't get a fine because you got fourteen days. There are certain things that are fourteen days and some are automatic, like an occurrence, which would be the unregistered tenant up here because it's a hundred dollars a day if there's a unregistered person living in your house or somebody that can't pass the background check or anything like that.
Do people not pay those or?
Right.
Yeah, some people, some people, some people not pay them.
If they pay it, it goes on the budget, right?
No. It goes, it goes, it goes back in, into the PCPO other, for other income. So your bad debt, what he's referring to is basically fines that haven't been paid, like unreg, unregistered tenants. Hundred dollars a day. It goes out for ten days, right? They can only charge a thousand bucks. So that goes into litigation. Okay, the people are still here. That goes into litigation for three years. Okay, so you pay for attorney's costs, all that stuff for a thousand dollars. Okay, and before you know it, if they do sell the house, before they, they sell the house, that money will come back to Brookridge, but you might not get all of that money back. So that comes off. Might as a bad debt, you might be, it's an accounting function basically. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I was just wondering if it went back on there because they could use it for the budget.
They don't know where it's, they don't
Eventually, it, it, it'll get back into somewhere under, uh, uh, for other income.
Just being a normal person around here, I drive around in a golf cart all the time and see all these code violations. I mean, the guy behind me has like a bush growing under his house. And the other guy has like an eBay shop in his little shed out there in the front yard. I'm just kinda wondering. Nobody says anything about it. And they want me to say anything to them. I don't know.
Obviously, the next thing you know, it'll be like you're trying to find something for you. To get back at you and stuff. And that's, that's, at least this way, it's like, say, if we got a problem with one of code enforcement, like I can say, like, if, I'll just use say Peter for example. If Peter's the one that's like, sit out there too many times and gives somebody a violation, make them feel uncomfortable, that they're harassed or all kinds of things. If I can go straight to Peter and I say, "Okay, what's going on with this address?" And if I think it's extensive, then I'd say, "Well, you need to stop whatever you're doing." If it's a citizen park, who's going to regulate them? Because you, you're not gonna know who said it or it's a he said, she said type thing. And this way, if he doesn't correct the problem, you see, you're writing up, you get rid of it. Because you know exactly who did it. There's no question about it. So that's, that's where that comes in. Um, so I'll say, say that you got, you got two, two first shift, two second shift, one in the guard shack, third shift, and one driver. Well, okay, you can eliminate the one driver by putting him in the guard shack. So just for safety reasons, you don't want the person being by themselves. So that really only going to eliminate
Nothing.
You're only, you're not gonna eliminate anything except for your second shift driver.
No.
Yeah, because you'd have Mike Code riding around second shift.
You're gonna, you're gonna eliminate all the drivers?
I'm saying that's, that's the thing they come up, that's the thing they come up with. I'm
If you eliminated the drivers, then you only need six people a day?
Yeah, I mean, from that standpoint. But I'm talking about where they come, where they're saying the citizen
Yeah, I know. Oh, yeah.
So the only thing you're gonna eliminate is, from that scenario, is Mike Code because he works second shift. And then basically you're gonna eliminate your first, second, and third shift on a weekend. Well, that's still not to, that's still not enough to not have the assessments go up. Still not gonna be enough. So you still gonna have to cut somewhere else. So that's not, to me, that's not the answer. Uh, because as you said, Beverly, that there's some ladies that like to know the fact somebody's driving around.
Absolutely. So A lot of, we have a lot of new ladies that's moving into the community and they feel very good about security or the code enforcement.
But are they given their, the fault sense to do that? Because they really don't have any authority.
Yeah, they do not have any, they do not have any authority to arrest or anything like that.
So we're giving people a fault sense to do that. I disagree with that. I think that people, because it comes with the game, we have agents, we have guards, we have people. And I, I think it's, I don't think it is technically, but I think it's the feeling of being, feeling sure. I live by myself and I like to see Mike and I like to see Pete and I like to see all the guys.
Right.
Not that they're gonna jump out or whatever, but they want to save me, but you know they're there. But if we have lots of money, that's my thought too. But I'm looking for a realistic way to save some money. You gotta look at what you're spending and what you're getting back for that money. And I think what they're saying right now is we're at a bare minimum right now. I agree with what you're saying, but if we don't start somewhere, we don't get anything. That's why people are just prepared. Because they're choosing to do the right thing. I agree. I'm not saying very much in that sense, I'm just saying. I don't think they can cut because we're at bare minimum. I support that school and I understand the complexity of what they're handling with. And I think they are and we have to be here at the bare minimum. So if you cut the bare minimum, we're gonna be in trouble. And I said that yesterday and I don't know if that's fair. I think if you want to do it. That's where we're at, you guys. I mean, we're at, we're accountable. It depends on what we have right now. I don't think we can afford to.
Jerry, first of all, Katie?
Yeah.
I would be happy to pay more and still see that little security guard, guard of the body.
Well, that's, that's, that's the way I look at it. I mean, it's not like, um, I mean, I'm trying to figure out other ways to do it. Like say you put two people in the guard shack. You do not have, say, that second person driving at night not staying in the car the whole time. Like he works like, uh, say the first two hours of his shift, uh, would be in the car shack. And the last two hours of his shift being in the guard shack. And then in the middle, he's, he's doing like, say, he does one patrol at, say, two o'clock. And another patrol he does at four o'clock, you know, something like that. Only thing you really save is probably the gas month from using that much gas. That'd be the only way to look at that. Uh, the other part is that, um, you have staggered shifts like, um, say, first shift that comes in, that coming in at eight o'clock, six o'clock, comes in at like ten and works ten to six. And then you cut those four hours off somewhere else in there. And you have like Greg or Peter or somebody work those four hours and you was able to cut that. But, um, you know, you know, yours down to like the bare minimum too, right? I mean, you got two people all the time, right? So if you're not here, then you still need the two people because, say, for example, the second shift person is closing. Um, so he, he falls in the bathroom, you wouldn't, nobody, if it was a slow night, nobody would find him till the next morning. So that's something you gotta look at. Yeah, just from a state, safety standpoint, you gotta look at it that way. Uh, you do want two people coming. He could trip them. For the work, the third, second shift, they gotta do something. I, I know they do something at the pool between eight and nine.
They close, they, yes, they're, they're, after nine o'clock, they close the pool and, um, then they do the, they clean up and go through the bathrooms, you know, sanitize and clean everything up and then they go. It takes about a, you know, up to an hour to get all that done.
Hey, sometimes if you want, when one person walking around out there at the pool, right?
Well, they got one person at the, one person at the pool and one person here.
Okay, say a person at the pool. Uh, loses balance and falls into the pool and hits his head or something on the side. Well, the other person not gonna find him till it's too late. But you gotta have, you want somebody here. So it is a safety factor for the other employee. Um,
You ready?
Yeah, I'm ready. I think, I think I've answered everybody. Well, let's see, I've got one more question. Okay, uh, there's a comment made, "Fact is changes going to be necessary." And then the next question is, "We need to have a balance." Not everyone participates
Appreciates.
appreciates the pool, but appreciates code enforcement. There are thousands of people in here. That's correct. So it's like a bound, it does, it is like a balancing act. Um, let's see what else. Um, cut back on the hours of code enforcement, you're gonna have to close down the pool or office or whatever. Um, one, maybe we feel safe driving around, but how can we see anything going on when they're going real fast? Okay, some people feel safer with people driving around. Being a snowbird, I like to know someone is out there. That's the lady answering that question. Okay, well, I appreciate everybody coming out today. Anybody else got a question about anything? Uh, right now, let's see, all I know coming to is still the budget. Uh, the agenda for Wednesday's night's meeting is very limited. So, uh, um, we'll still talk about this budget and, and things like that. But I'll pretty much explain that the, the pay and how first, this first pay period went. Stuff else won't compare for the rest of the year. Um, you don't really have, I don't have, I don't, there's not an easy way to cut things or, or it's just gonna take a lot of effort to do it if it does not pass. And basically people's gonna have to give up stuff. I don't know how to be any other way. But I appreciate everybody coming out to the same day. Um, and if you got any ideas. Oh, somebody had the idea of putting a suggestion box somewhere to put suggestions. They, they don't really need that. All you gotta do is call me. My number's three five two six six seven five eight three eight. And I answered about ninety-nine percent of the time. Sometimes I don't get the message till later on, but, because I'm busy, but usually I answer it. Like this morning, I answered it. Answered it and the first thing was, "Can you go check on my neighbor?" Uh, and it was not my duty, but I said, "Okay, fine, we knew that." She had not heard from him. And, uh, he, he said he just didn't answer her text last night. So, uh, so, uh, that's all right. We found out he was live though. All right, y'all, good evening.